This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on the Kushner YouTube channel. We're on live tonight and via Zoom. If I can ask everybody, there's a lot of people in the room tonight, can I please ask you to put their phones on mute so we're not getting all kinds of interruptions, please? Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting?
Make a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We do have a full board tonight, can everybody please introduce yourselves, starting with Steve?
Steve Boucher, member.
The Intervigent, member.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Ryan DeChambeau, chairman.
Raquelus, vice chairman.
Okay, there's no minutes to go over, so let's just dive right into it. Can I get a motion to go into the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting?
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing tonight is a site plan review of the solar special permit modification. This is a process to modify for the site plan review of a special permit for a 7.5 megawatts solar array proposed by Sincarfa Park Drive LLC. The engineer is Weston and Sampson. The plans and accompanying document are available for inspection at the town clerk's office at Partingways Building, 130 Main Street, first floor during regular business hours. There's a lot of people here tonight. The way that this is going to work is I'm going to allow Sincarfa to go up and talk about their modifications and anything else they'd like to discuss tonight. Once Sincarfa is done, the planning board will have the time to ask their questions and have a dialogue with Sincarfa. And then, once the board is all set, I'll go to all of you. Once you wish to come up, please raise your hand, go to the podium, give us your name and your address for the record. And please refrain from shouting out in the audience, please wait to come up to the podium. I will try to call on everybody and get to everybody. Sincarfa, you're up.
Good evening, Graham Bukowski, on behalf of Sincarfa Park Drive LLC. Really, last time we were before you was sometime in August to discuss our Brooks Avenue access to the site plan, especially as permitting to receive back in 2021, this project. Since then, as some of you probably already know, there's been some concerns from, you know, the community, some neighbors adjacent to the site. As a result of that, you know, we've listened to those concerns, we've tried diligently to find alternate points of access. And we believe we pivoted and found a point of access which alleviates most of the concerns. And that's what we're here tonight to present. You'll see up on this board right here, it might slightly differ than the site plan we shared with you earlier. The site plan, I believe, that was distributed to you was for the Brooks access, which we are shying away from, and we're here to present this tonight. So I'll jump right into it if you have any, don't have any questions or something. So this access point is off of the end of Lambert Street. For those that don't know, Lambert Street is a town-owned street all the way to our landowner's property line, Mr. Ray White. We feel that this access minimizes disruption to the community through the construction phase and also for the life of the project. You know, we've explained, you know, during the construction phase that yes, there will be, you know, a number of vehicles entering and exiting the property, not for obviously the reasons to clear the site, deliver materials. And once the site is complete, quarterly, maybe once or twice, you'll see a pickup truck for a routine O and M. So our engineer, Rob Bukowski, is here, prepared this plan. We did a wetland delineation as well of the area to see what the overall disturbance would be. I know that's not necessarily an impertuse of this board tonight, but, you know, we did evaluate the disturbance on all fronts, net disturbance for what we already permitted, and also what we would have to seek additional regulatory approvals for through the natural heritage, which we've actually spoke to them, and they view very highly of this alternate access point. And, you know, we spoke to them about Pat Thorpe for obtaining approval from them once we amended our NOI. So other than that, Rob, do you want to add something?
Excuse, one second. Can everybody out on Zoom, please put your computers on mute, please? If you'd like to speak, I will call upon you later, please.
Good questions.
We haven't submitted any of this, we haven't seen any of this. We let them go, and then they need to submit this to us for review, and then we set up another meeting to go over it.
We have to continue the meeting because they're talking about a plan we haven't even changed yet. This plan hasn't been submitted.
That's correct. We wanted to still stay on the hearing to address the neighborhood's concerns with the original access and present this, right? We felt this was the best venue to do that, and we are aware if you do need to continue the meeting to render a vote, we'd be happy to submit the stamp plans, which we bought stamp plans tonight. So we just wanted to talk through it while we had it on.
How many sets of plans do you have to submit tonight?
Just one. We just have this one.
We can submit the number of copies. This was sort of a later change, like Graham had said, that the intent was to talk about Brooks Ave, but since we moved away from that now, this is sort of a new development that we wanted to present.
When did you decide to shift gears?
So we actually, this wetland delineation took place shortly after we were in front of you in August. We were looking at this location and a couple other locations that share a common border with Mr. White's property, where we had, thought we had pretty clear access. So we've had a number of iterations of drawings prepared, and we felt that this one was the best path forward to address all the concerns that we've heard thus far.
What's the date of that plan?
Yesterday.
Okay. So...
Okay, I, I, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, I mean, I don't, with all due respect, I mean, we do ask that the materials that you're going to submit be brought in ahead of time so that the board has got a chance to look at them, and me. My mind is getting older and slower by the day, and, and I can't, I mean, I don't mind discussing this, but I don't see how we can actually do anything tonight, seeing as the board hasn't seen this. You just did the plan yesterday.
Understood.
You know, the last thing we got was a modified plan for access off of Park Drive, which is kind of what I was expecting to see tonight. But by all means, do your presentation. By the time you get through it, I would like to, even if you do as a magic marker, show us where the previous access was.
Yeah, we actually have the plan blown up on previous access.
That's good.
Yeah.
Just one question procedurally. The new access, the change, does it impact the abutter notifications at all?
No, it's the same property. Same property, no, the access location has just changed, but the surrounding properties, it would not change notifications. We...
Even though you're now bringing a road in from a different location, I know the layout exists, but...
This road is existing all the way to here, our property line is within here, which has not changed, and over here has not changed. So the butter notifications...
Are everybody within somebody feet of the entire block?
Precisely.
Okay. Okay.
So, yeah, understood, and, you know, we just, again, it was sort of a late change, so we wanted to, since we're already on the agenda anyway, just wanted to present this, and we understand that we'll have to submit the requisite number of copies and, you know, ahead of time. But really, as Graham was saying, this is really the only change. We're moving from Brooks Ave over to Lambert. The array layout is staying the same, the internal access roads are staying the same. When this was approved back in 2021, there was a fairly new requirement that was implemented then, where the fire department had requested 360-degree access around each of the three array areas, so that was included back in that 2021 plan. So this plan really just reflects the move, and I can, I can bring this up because I realize it's probably difficult to see from this distance. So this is Lambert, this is Brooks. So the plan that was approved back in '21 is this one. And this is the access off Brooks, and Lambert is right here. One of the other advantages to Lambert is that the road comes straight down, so the traffic during construction and after construction too, where they can just come right in and then get into the site.
And there's no houses on that section of Lambert in between that?
Uh, there's, there is a house.
Right there.
There's one right here.
Yeah, on that side, yeah. Which was a pretty sharp turn in the first, just to get those big trucks around, even coming through there.
For Brooks?
Even on Lambert, if you would have come down Brook and you would have come, if you had been traveling and had to make that left-hand turn right there, you know, coming down Park Drive, it would have been, it was a tight turn, I noticed that, so...
Yeah, we did several...
That's going straight, it's going straight up, straight up.
Straight up, right. Yeah, we did several iterations of different turning radius analysis, and it was a tight turn.
So when you go straight from Lambert right into the site, you would access that further site through that site?
That's correct, so, let me go back to this one. So basically, come straight up, and then this is the perimeter road that goes around this array, and then that connects to this road, which was one of the approved roads. So really, the only change is this wasn't here, this was here. So we're moving what was here over to Lambert.
Now, the perimeter, what's the width of that perimeter road?
I believe it's 20 feet.
Do you, where the half turn, when you take a, when you head east, yep, and then you do that turn, do they own the property where they need to make that corner?
They do.
Okay.
Yep.
And what's your wetlands, is it the dark spots down there?
Yeah, so this is the wetland area here, two smaller wetland areas here. This was our proposed wetland replication area that was approved by Conservation back in 2021. So the idea here would be, since this is adding additional wetland disturbance, we would expand this replication area.
And you're not going over the 5,000?
We are, so we realized there's Army Corps triggers as well.
Yeah, Army Corps and amended NOI too for CommCom.
As Graham mentioned, we did have a conversation, this area was natural heritage, which is the endangered species program en masse, they updated their maps, I don't know, six months or a year ago. So at the time that this project was approved, it was not in a mapped priority habitat area. Since then, it has been updated, but because we have the approval and, you know, we went through these modifications with Heritage, and they agreed that this is a minor modification, so essentially grandfathered it.
Is there any difference in the position or number of solar arrays between this new plan and the old one?
No.
It's exactly the same?
Yep, the only difference is the road.
Access.
Yeah, access point is the only change. And it's actually, the width, I just want to note, is slightly narrower than the 40 feet we originally were approved for on Brooks Avenue, right, Rob? It's down to...
Yeah, I mean, the, go back to this one.
The layout of Lambert is...
Our access road that would connect to Lambert is less in width than what we originally approved for at Brooks Avenue.
Yeah, we, so, so this right away, I think, was 40 feet, or this, this paper road here. So the original approval including, included use of that entire width. And then Sincarfa went back and forth with some of the abutters on that. But, you know, this, this here would be less than 40 feet, I don't know what the, it'd probably be the equivalent of the paved apron, but that's one thing we've got to look at.
You don't know what the width would be?
I mean, I could scale it off from here, I didn't bring my scale, but, I mean, I'm assuming it's...
No, it's not under 16 feet.
Oh, no, no.
What's the layout with Lambert?
The layout?
It's probably a 40-foot layout out there, considering the age of it, but...
It could be.
I mean, assuming the pavement's about 20 feet wide, or so, again, it's an older, an older road way back there.
You don't see a problem, are you, were you over 5,000 on the other two crossings?
No, we were like 4,600.
You don't see a problem with showing alternative access?
I mean, the Army Corps is, it takes a little while, so we realize there's going to be some added time, you know, once we submit that. Our hope is that, you know, we get approval through the planning board, then we start the next step, which would be updating the wetland NOI and preparing the Army Corps permit.
And our NOI to national heritage too, which is done simultaneously with the CommCom
I mean, really, the biggest difference seems to be that where one abutter was impacted more, or two abutters were impacted more than the rest, now you've shifted it over to most of the construction activity going past that one house down at the end of Lambert Street.
There's no house on the opposite side?
No, it's not, yeah.
It's only on one side of the...
There's only on one side.
I mean, at some point, I'd like to go out and take a look at it visually, but...
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, other than that, I mean, I don't, we can't really do anything tonight, can we?
We can't do anything tonight, I mean, I think the only thing they're asking for is a, is this something for them to pursue? Is it something that, is something that we would have eventually considered?
Well, I mean, it's, I'm, from my end, I mean, considering the size of the project, I mean, it's, to get in, there are two potential access ways to tell them that they can't access that property, you know, because, for whatever reason, you know, that's, that's a, that's a difficult, I don't know that I'm willing to put the town in that position of defending it in court if it, if it got to that point. I mean, this is, this is big enough dollars that if we tell them they can't, they can't access the site either way, then that's, that's going to lead to probably litigation. I'm not willing to go there. I mean, I'm certainly willing to look at an alternative access.
I'd look at it closer, but my couple of trips down here, never looked further down Lambert Street. I had a concern making that corner, literally at that intersection right there, Lambert and Park, them people, you know, Lambert and Park, even them making that turn right there, you know, there's a house across the street, almost directly across from that intersection right there, right now, that looks like, you know, if, I mean, obviously it's, it's costing them because they're going to have to do some more, you know, wetland replication, why they probably didn't go that way in the first place, but now that's, I mean, I, my guts tell me that's the better way if, if it's all gonna, if it all, if it all works out with the, with the road width.
I think, I do think as a minimum, you need to show us how wide the pavement is and how wide the layout is of Lambert Street.
Right, I think it's, I think it's as a conceptual drawing, basically, I mean, we can't approve any of it, so...
The end of Lambert Street, it ends, and there's a portion that's unimproved that we've, that...
And that would be the layout width.
Exactly, so that's all we can do.
And that's the width that you have the ability to do some instruction in.
And nobody owns property, nobody else owns property from the end of the asphalt of Lambert Street to their property line?
With all the title searches, and we called the tax assessor, they said this is the limits of Lambert Street, and it abuts to Mr. White's property, and our oldest survey parrot's app.
Is it public, even though it's not built? Or there's a public way in?
From what the tax assessor's told us, it's public all the way to the property line, even though the portion is unimproved.
Okay. Wes, can you, can you situate that house on that property so that it doesn't look like I see it?
It doesn't show, does it?
No, probably right out here, but we can, when we submit the plans, we can pull that off the aerial.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be helpful, because, you know, like...
I mean, before, before the proposal was, everybody was coming down Park Drive anyway, so up to this point, I mean, the access is kind of the same, but from here over, now we've got to look at how much it's going to impact the abutters to either side of your
As a conceptual drawing, I mean, I think it's...
Yeah, it looks fine. It's like a concept.
It does not look like a much better alternative.
Conceptually, it does, until you get all, everything else ready, everything we need on there.
Good. Gentlemen, you have any more questions?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard what they have to say, does anybody have any questions for Sincarfa or the board?
If I could just add one thing, is that there's no difference in the solar array layout or count from the first time we went through this. So, I mean, it seems like if we're going to have comments, it really needs to be addressed, it really needs to focus on this new, this new entryway.
Agreed.
So I just don't want to open it up to discussion of the whole project all over again, we're just going to rehash stuff that we did.
Your point, Rick, is that the plan that we have is off the table, they're telling us.
Is that what they're saying?
Yeah.
Brooks is off the table, so at some point, there's no point in spinning our wheels on Brooks.
No, absolutely not.
Yes, ma'am. Could you please stand, give us your name and address, please?
Lee Leahy, 19 Hindle Street, I own some of the scrub boards that they're going to be going by on Lambert in the back there. Do you put up a fence or something like that? Or is it just cutting through the woods and that's it?
So our access road would be, we would cut in a new access road within the limits of the proposed width. There's a fence that goes around the array per National Electric Code, and there's a, there's a gate at the end of our driveway, so nobody drives down and camps out at our solar site, so...
How many feet is it from that part of Lambert that...
To the first array?
To the first...
Um, just from, it would be from the property line to the...
350 feet, not exact, I'm using a pen, but...
So it would be, it would be stepped back from Lambert Street, there would more or less just be a road, new road cut in, and the trees on either side would stay on the edge of the road.
I'll probably get more deer in my yard.
Is that good of him?
I'm a man, I like watching him.
Yeah, because it's still public, it's already asked, well, I understand, I won't go along. You can't hear the members on Zoom, if you guys don't speak up, we can't hear you. I said, the other question becomes, you know, is that they're going to be extending, basically extending the roadway, am I correct?
We'd be improving the unimproved portion to match whatever your standard detail is for a street like Lambert.
Okay. That was just a question, was it going to have to be, asphalt was going to have to be put to extend it up to the property line, was...
Well, on the, on the town-owned portion, I mean, we'd be, we'd be happy to do that, but our road, our access road details...
Exactly.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
My name is Paul Lemire, I own the property on 6th White Street, in the back of the side, they're putting land in a question, onto the property. So my question is, has to do with what he asked earlier, in the, one of the early first questions he asked, was if all the abutters that would change or anything since the previous meetings? So, and he said, no, it's all the same abutters, but this is the first meeting that I've been told that I was unabutted for, which was canceled from last week to today. So, but it sounds like this meeting's been going on for two years now, so, but I, I myself, I know there's other people here that had never probably had invitations to any of the meetings that gone on in the last two years. This is the first I've read about this in the last two weeks.
In the last six months, they've come before us informally just to discuss whether they need to amend the permit or not?
Yeah, I was just curious, because it sounds like it's a revision to a accepted, he said it's already grandfathered in or something like that, it's already been accepted and approved or something like that. So, but, and he said that, you know, he said, oh, there's no new abutters that were added to the list, but obviously, I'm a newer abutter that was added to the list because I was never invited, I don't know if anybody else is here in the same situation, but this is the first I heard of this. I was never an abutter that was part of this meeting to do anything before, so...
The technical word is it 300 feet?
It's a 300-foot radius from the boundaries of the property? Why, why you wouldn't have been notified in 2020 or 2021?
I wasn't either in 2020.
We get the, we get the list from the town's office, and we send it out, we certify now to make sure.
But a lot of us never got any invitations to any previous, this is the first, first time I've heard about it.
Overnight mail was, got my attention, and it was the first thing that I'd ever...
Yeah, we, um...
Because I had to sign for this paperwork.
These cards, the last public hearing was actually in 2020 for this project, so...
Yeah, these cards are the cards that we get as proof that the abutters were notified, and which abutters were notified?
Okay.
So as you can see, quite a few.
Quite a few, you know, if you see my name in there, I'd be surprised.
Well, we depend, we depend on the assessor's office to compile the list, and then it's their responsibility to send them out.
I'm just kind of curious why a lot of us were never invited.
Our answer is, my answer is, we don't know.
Okay.
You know, we depend, we depend on the...
Yeah, no, I understand, I'm not saying, but, but I heard, I heard the conversation we asked, that there are any new abutters, and they said, no, everything, nothing has changed. And obviously, something changed because...
Well, what, what I did ask is that it looked like the...
Can we have one person speak at the time, please?
The only difference to this plan from the other one is that the site access is no longer proposed to go between two abutters, but we'll provide, but we'll put the traffic past the other abutter that's out there right next to the entrance. I mean, we typically look at access quite closely because that's the biggest impact. If you've got 20 or 30 or 40 acres of trees that are being cleared out of there, you're going to have trucks go by that, this new abutter that was not planning on having any trucks going by before.
Right, that changes the entrance.
That was the, that was the direction of my question, at any instant.
Okay. So maybe the way they changed the access to, might have changed the abutters list, I don't know, but it...
You don't make up that list.
No, I didn't say, yeah.
You could go talk to the assessor and ask her what she gave back in 2020.
Like I said, I'm not trying to say put fault, but I'm just saying, the question you said, that, oh, and he said, there's no new people that know about this, so there's a bunch of us here that did know about it before, so, that's all.
I'll try to put a little more... Who was going to get trucks past their property that wasn't going to get trucks past their property before? That was my question. Maybe not very well asked, but...
Please stand up.
Sorry.
Yes, my name is Mark Moore, I live at 41 Park Drive, and I was an abutter to the Brooks Ave proposed site, and from my understanding from Sincarfa tonight, that's, they're taking that off the table, and they're going to use Lambert Street, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I would ask that if Brooks Ave, rather than tie up everybody's time tonight, if Brooks Ave goes back on the plan that I get to speak publicly about the Brooks Ave access, would the board allow me to do that?
If we have another public hearing regarding this entire site, these same people will be notified, and these same people will come in, I'm hoping these same people, and hopefully everybody that's supposed to be notified, and you can, you will be notified, you can come in and discuss whether it's whichever way they decide to go in.
Mr. Chair, can I say, just, just to clarify, we just do the abutter notifications once before the first public hearing, and then if you continue, you know, the people here would know.
Yeah.
So we would just do one round of mailings.
But for clarity, right now, we're being asked for an amendment that change the entrance from previously approved Brooks to Lambert. That's what we're going to be discussing at the next public hearing.
Correct.
So not going back to Brooks. And so in other words, if we approve Lambert, the amendment, they'd have to come back and start all over with another amendment if they fail to get the access approved by various other agencies through Lambert. And that would require a whole new abutter notification. Because once we close the books on it, improve the alternate route from a planning perspective, we still have to go to the US Army Corps of Engineers because there are going to be more than 5,000 square feet of wetland filling, they have to go back to the Conservation Commission with either a new filing for this crossing or an amendment, whatever they determine. You know, so there are other avenues, they, they're not done once they finish with us. But then if they fail, and they got to come back to the other route because they couldn't get this route approved, they will have to then amend the permit again and start all over with the notifications.
In a public hearing?
In a public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Gentlemen in the back.
Wayne Ignacio, 3526 Christian Avenue. I have two questions. Number one, what's the lifetime of the initial installation of this, this project?
Are you talking about the?
Before you guys have to take into a complete redo because of panels being worn out. What's the average life on one of the panels?
Well, the first question, we designed for a 30 to 35-year useful life of the project.
Okay. No, that answers my question. The second, the second question is, in the south, in the southwest array that you have there, you have half of the lot used for the array and the other half isn't. What's, what's, is that for future expansion or is that non-buildable?
Non-buildable. We're well constrained in that area.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Patrick Fitzgerald, 80 Lambert Street. As far as the road coming in, will there be any type of drainage to relieve the wetlands? Because it does drain right down across that road.
Can you show me?
Where am I?
I think you are, you might be right here, right? It's Park Drive. I think this is the corner.
Okay, yeah. So this is me. Oh, you got it blown up. And then I own this lot here and here as well. So the drain, the water drains, and it comes down this way and then back into here. So that's like, the lowest point is what will get filled in. So my concern is it won't drain if you have a road without drainage coming through here.
We would propose either drain culverts or road障 stones to allow the, you know, connect both sides of the wetland, allow the water to continue to flow through there.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't restrict the existing drainage from there.
We already got the reclamation here, so.
Yes. It's good. Yeah, that gets expanded.
Well, we need to use the road too, so we don't want to.
We don't want to wash away.
Right, right. I just don't want to hold the water on my side, you know?
Anybody else? Is there anybody out in Zoom that would like to talk?
Yes, I would.
Okay, introduce yourself, please.
My name is Sean Zevs, 1 Warriors Way. I guess, you know, from an overall project standpoint, I know you wanted to state that just the access today, but there was kind of new information that we've learned really from the Main Street project. And I know there's been, you know, some difficulty with some of the stormwater drainage, some of the properties over there. And I was just curious what was different about this project, which, by the way, is about twice the size, that's going to guarantee that, you know, my property, for example, would stay in its current condition. Like my property, for example, it was 1.2 acres. It's already a quarter of it is wetlands. And any small change to that stormwater drainage could put my property underwater, like some people have experienced on that Main Street project that I believe has been halted. So I just want to hear what was different about this project to make sure that the abutting properties do not have those types of issues.
Just, just the access spike? I mean, that's the only thing that's different, different that's being proposed right now. Yes, no?
I'm not saying that there's a change to this overall project. I'm saying that what has changed is we've experienced what happens when we've got a major stormwater drainage area and we remove 1,000 trees from it. Right? So now we're removing roughly 2,000 trees from this project, and it's a major stormwater area. And so I was just curious, like, what's different about this project? Because I know there's been issues with the Main Street project. People, people's properties have changed dramatically with the, with the water.
Mr. Han, are you there? Pat, are you there?
I'm here.
Does this property have a stormwater, a stormwater permit or anything to do with stormwater?
So it went through the Mark Senorozio era with SW Col did do the care review on this, yes.
I mean, I, I mean, just as, just from my layman's perspective, I mean, one of the problems on Main Street is they cleared the whole side of the hill, and they didn't do the required drainage work that they were supposed to do. So some of, some of that problem was just related to, let's put the drainage improvements in first before we do the clearing. You know, I think that's, that's really where we are. That's my general understanding of it. I mean, there, there may be some other problems too, but it's, that, that seemed to be the basic thing that, that happened there. Let's tear all the trees out and then hope it drains okay. And it didn't, quite honestly. And they're, and they're still working on getting it to, to operate properly, as I understand.
And another difference is the projects on Main Street shouldn't have started in November. They weren't able to hydroseed and get vegetation down to help prevent the water runoff. I haven't looked at this plan 100%, but the one on Main Street is a 14-foot difference from one end to the other, and the water was just flowing downhill towards Main Street. If this project would start at the right time of the year to help prevent, and the stormwater basins that they have in play would all be built at the right time of the year, not in the wet season.
And hopefully before they clear the entire site.
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Just keep in mind, you may be thinking spring now and summer with this project, but if they're going to get a 401 water quality cert and go through the 404 wetlands process, it could take all of the summer and maybe a little bit more, and they may be looking to start in November or October or whatever. So we need to keep an eye on the phasing of that for this project. I don't know if there's anything in their permit or time of year restrictions. And remember, we looked internally at the other projects, and, and they weren't there. So I think conservation can control that. They, they need to come through conservation before they can start the job, and road controls have to be inspected, and the stormwater basins need to be in. And they got to come in front of conservation to amend their NOI or, as Dave said, apply for another one. And that's appealable by the public. That could be another delay for them. So no one should be worried that this is going to start, you know, suddenly without any notice.
Anybody else?
Oh, thank you, thank you. Thank you for answering the question. I think, so, so in other words, this is, this is going to be managed in a very different way than, so we shouldn't have those same issues, right?
We've learned a lot. In, in the last three months, we've had a lot of internal meetings. There's been a lot of effort put into this to make sure that past mistakes, you know, don't happen again, and that all the departments are on the same page. And the 550 Main Street project did get approved to start back up. They've met all the requirements, and they've done a good job of stabilizing the site. So that's, that's the story there.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else out in Zoom that would like to ask any questions?
Oh, yeah, the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Bruce Benclon, Wild Rose Lane. The area where this is going, is it, how far away from the power lines is it?
Which car lines you referring to, the transmission easement or the distribution line on Park Avenue?
The one that follows our property line to Christian Avenue?
The big one.
The big one? The big one. There's an access road right on a Christian Avenue to get in. So, I mean, if it's not too far away, why are we going to disturb everybody?
Oh, so there is a wetland issue in there. We, we had looked at that, to going through that way. And unfortunately, that would, that would involve permitting above and beyond what we're going through here.
Anybody else?
Hi, Kathy Murray, 75 Lambert Street. And I just want to say, it's really disappointing to come to a meeting and find out that you're going to have this going by your house and not even know about it. So my second question would be, how, if this modification is approved, how long can we expect to have trucks going by our house? How long does it take to clearcut 50 acres of our neighborhood?
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. Like, I mean, there's an access road already there. Like, they use it to maintain the power lines.
And getting exclusive rights from EverSource is next to impossible. We've, we've tried that, and the utility kind of says no. They can do what they want.
So it's easy for the people to accept it?
I'm not saying that. I'm just, we've pursued every, every path that we've conceived imaginable.
So that, that access road is only and simply allowed to be used by EverSource? Is that a public?
No, the access road through the utility easement is owned by, owned and maintained by EverSource. And they have received easements from the underlying landowners to use it in perpetuity. And there's actually, I'm not sure most of you folks know, but EverSource has a, a big rehabilitation project planned through that easement from Paul River to Cushinget, which is a whole new transmission line. And we've actually tried to work with them to piggyback off using that access, and they said no.
Right.
We, we, we wholeheartedly agree with you, and, you know, we wish EverSource would agree as well.
Is it a monetary thing?
A little bit tied back into labor.
No, no, it wasn't money.
Okay. One at a time, please.
I mean, aren't you, aren't you helping EverSource?
They don't see it that way, but, I mean, you could, you could say that.
They see it as competition.
Gentlemen in the back, you had your hand up, sir? You have a question?
She's not, she wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like an answer to that question.
I'm sorry. So you wanted to answer about the construction duration, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it would be roughly six to nine months? So the clearcutting would be the first thing that would happen? That's roughly one to two months, depending on how dense it is. So we have to clearcut roughly 30 acres of Mr. White's property.
And how many trucks will that be going by every day?
In the beginning, it will probably be a good amount. I'd say you probably have a dozen trucks maintaining one or two trips a day with the logging. But most of the work, as I mentioned earlier, will be heavily concentrated the first few months of construction. Once equipment and materials delivered, the operation is limited to just, you know, people showing up to work every day in their own vehicles.
And who's going to repair the road? Because we have, we own a project in the bottom of the street, and that road's already destroyed.
So, yeah, I don't know the extent of what the existing damage is as a result of that project, but, you know, whatever the town's going to require us to do to the unimproved portion of the road that connects to Mr. White's property, we will, you know, comply with whatever the town's standard detail is. And any damage from our vehicles will certainly repair and come.
Is that good? I can see a question.
Is there any type of fencing or abrevieties you could put up for the duration of a project going on?
We could have a conversation if you'd like.
It's going to look like shit. You're going to have a big fence in the end of Lambert Street.
I would be at the end of Lambert Street. We could have a discussion with you exactly what it would look like if you had any questions.
Again, he still has to submit a set of plans with this, with the road, with the fencing, with, we still got to go over all of this? So you, a lot of you are asking questions that we still need to go over, and we don't have the answers to yet.
We appreciate them though, but I think ultimately, if we can meet with you and figure out what works best for you, we'd much prefer that. You know, we don't want to be.
Gentlemen in the back.
Oh, yeah. I've already introduced myself. Can I have to do it again? My, my question is, you can't, there's no way that the power company will give you a temporary permit to use that, that entrance until such time as you play Peckerland?
I wish. I've asked many times.
Even at the bottom, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Right from the bottom to the power?
When that subdivision's going in, at the end of Park Drive? We've tried to.
Same thing.
Same thing. We have to go into that. So there's already an easement granted to the developer on the other side of that. For, that's actually going to be, what we understand, Park Drive is going to be a public road through there to that subdivision. Going north to where we need to get to to our site, EverSource is not willing to give us permission for exclusive access. Because that is their easement. They maintain it. It's their road. And their project that's coming up right now, the Fallenett to Cushinget reliability project, takes priority over our small solar project compared to theirs.
Right, right.
Representative Zeris Albin, I keep hearing minor change, minor change. It's going right through a wetland. It's not minor. It's going to get to a point where we're going to relocate and replicate every wetland area in this town. I mean, we got a serious issue in town with stormwater and drainage and everything. Just something to deliberate about. Question, is the, the new solar bylaw going to affect this project if they have to resubmit the plans and all that other stuff?
That was a question that I was going to look into. I'm, I don't know exactly 100% yet, but that was something I was going to look into after this meeting because this was just thrown at us this evening. And like you, you have questions. We're going to have questions that I'm going to have to go back and look into, and one of them is that question. Will they have to go back and resubmit on the old solar? I don't know. I'll give the answer for you.
Several things popped in my head listening to everything. Number one, Mr. Resendez, you're right. When this was brought before us informally in the fall, we were talking about modifying Brooks Street. They already had approval for using most of Brooks. And due to some legalities, they had to shrink it down. So we were being asked for them to work within a lesser width, if you will, of the access. And this is completely different, although I don't, I don't think, from a planning perspective, this seems like a better plan. A couple of things pop in my head. One is I would like, I'd like the developers to give us a route. How, where are the trucks going to go? Can we, I hate to, you know, refine them to one road, but I also don't want to see trucks meandering all over all the streets. There are a lot of side streets. You know, there are a lot of, they could take a different, a whole different, different routes, if you will. And I think, I think we should refine it to the least impactful. And perhaps the roads are in the best shape. I, I don't know. But I'd like you to analyze where they're going to come from to enter this site. In other words, you know, I don't want to see somebody coming from Middle Road and meandering through and by 800 homes to get to the site versus whatever the shortest, least impactful route. And I think that should be provided to the citizens, you know? And then you might have to post a bond for repairs of the road. I'd also like to see some real concrete on paper stuff about how many trucks are they really going to see per day? There's a way to estimate it rather than just throw it out there, maybe 10 or whatever. I mean, I don't want people to, you know, see construction start, and all of a sudden there's 100 trucks a day because they're trying to get it all done right away, and it's just unbearable. I mean, of course, the shorter duration is better, but I'd like to see something submitted on that. Also, you know, there should be some, you, we asked them for quite a bit of detail on Brooks, which this document shows. I think you need to supply the same thing for what the impact's going to be to the neighbors on, on both sides of this road.
That's the reason we're having this discussion. We want to understand what their concerns are so we can put it on that drawing the next time we're in front of you.
And I think too, in lines with what Mr. Divignan just said, I think we need a plan that shows the routing of the trucks that's going to be used to get people in and out of this. I mean, especially for the major things like the material, the panel delivery, and the land clearing. And, and I would, I would expect that there actually be construction routing on the roads so that we don't have truck drivers lost. That's not the easiest place in the world to get to. And certainly, we want to avoid having trucks circling the neighborhood to try and figure out how to get to the site. And it's going to mean some signage considerably before it gets to that point.
To add to that, there's actually a house like in the middle of Lambert Street, so you can't get to the other side of it.
Another reason, I think, that I'm just suggesting to these people that we get a plan that shows the routing of particularly the vehicles involved in land clearing and delivery of the panels. I mean, that seems to me where, that seems to me to be where the most of the off-site trucking is going to happen. And that, just based on what we've seen on other projects too. It's that, it's that first part where the land gets cleared and the trucks are rolling off, and there's all this bare ground exposed. That seems. That seems to be the worst part of these projects.
Well, we want to talk about too is having a wet truck. Because of the material, especially in the summertime, in and out. People are going to have their windows open. Their cars get all dirty with the dirt, you know what I mean? So that's something that.
All things that we do look into.
Does it make sense for you to file concurrently, run it side by side with Conservation Commission?
We plan to, yes.
Okay, because it wouldn't make any sense for us to be, you know, 10 rows ahead of them. They should be looking at this concurrently.
Agreed. We're not going to do it serially. It'll be concurrent.
Should maybe consider school bus routes when they're planning their routes in as well. It's all small roads, kids right out there. There are no sidewalks for them to be safe on. They're just on the dirt near the tiny roads.
We've done that before.
That's not uncommon. We've put restrictions into the deliveries of they can't show up till after school pickup and drop off.
Just ask that someone give us the school schedule, school bus schedule.
I'm 72, I don't.
But I said, it's in town, right? You guys have to ask in town, right?
Ask him.
I'm going for work. Who wants my kids to go, so I don't know the exact time.
Are there any other questions? Anybody on Zoom, any questions?
Are the new plans going to be on file at that town hall?
Yes, once they're submitted to us, they will be available at the town hall.
And they're supposed to be available to us, I think, one week before the meeting?
About the Friday. The minimum is the Friday before the meeting.
Yeah, we'd like to clarify that because there's been, I guess there's no town planner currently on staff still. So we've had some difficulty trying to understand when in fact does it need to be submitted? Because we were trying to get on the last meeting and for one reason or another, the plans weren't distributed to, I think, you folks.
No, that's not what happened. The last time you reached out to Paul requesting to be on the meeting and we were going to put you on the meeting and then I requested Paul to ask you that we needed a plan. But I wasn't going to put you on the meeting until I got the plan. Because when I did get the plan, which was approximately a week later, it was already too late to get a two-week public notice for the public hearing to be at the previous meeting.
Okay, because we had asked that, so we got to in time. So that's where the miscommunication was.
That's where the miscommunication was. It was the timing of when we actually received the plan, that updated set of plans. But to be on a meeting, on a scheduled meeting, which the next one is the 20th, if I'm not mistaken, plans need to be stamped and submitted by Friday. I like it Thursday personally.
So it's about the 14th?
Prior to the day of the meeting.
One week in advance.
So the meeting's the 20th, so Friday the 14th then?
One week in advance, yeah.
Got it.
The, when you submit the plans, they should be processed at the town clerk's office. And you should also send her a PDF of everything you're submitting so that anybody in the general public can make a call to Pam, Abonte, the town clerk, and they can just send it by email for anybody that wants to look at it. It may not be on our website, but we're working on creating a flow chart. And Pam, I had a meeting with Pam and the secretary and it was all about updating everything so that it becomes more available to the public. I know, you know, we're short, we don't have a planner. We're hoping to get somebody soon, but down the road, I guess. But I'm thinking you want a one-month continuous. If you file with Conservation, we want to run side by side. Does that make sense?
It does, I think. We'll confer and we'll get back to you guys. But we are going to file concurrently. So, and the one-month continuum should put us at what may, it's your first meeting tonight.
I'd like to see you get before the ConCon, before you come back to us. Because like I said, from a planning perspective, this makes sense. It may not be received so well from ConCon.
May 11th, I think, is the first one in May and then the 25th. Anything else? Any other questions? Do you get a motion?
Motion to continue this matter. We have to do a date certain, so you're okay with May 11th?
Yeah, if we're not ready, we can always just request a continuance.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, continue on May 11th, please.
So I will make a motion to continue the public hearing to May 11th. The butters will not be re-notified, just so you all know. But that meeting cannot happen until May 11th. Can't happen earlier than next meeting.
And the plans need to be on file with the town clerk at least six days before the meeting? Okay.
Yes. We have a motion already.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the time.
Thank you.
If you can continue your discussions outside, please. Mr. Morad, could you please continue outside, please? Thank you. Next, we have a discussion, an A and R number 2023-05. Laying on Bradford Street, map 15, lot 482, Zenith Consulting Engineering LLC. Three Main Street, Lakeville, Mass. Drawn for Deterre Development LLC. One Bro Drive, Acushnet, Mass. Is there anybody here representing? Who's going to represent? Oh, Romanelli?
You didn't have to be scared of all those people. You could have come earlier.
Mr. Romanelli?
Good evening.
Science.
Thought you guys were going to be going a little bit longer than that. I thought we were too.
All the, all the easel things, water, if you use that?
I knew you had one.
For the record, Pat Hannon from Conservation is also on Zoom.
Is he still there?
He is.
All right, for the record, my name is John Romanelli. I'm Zenith Lanzemares. I'm actually here for Niles from ZEE. He's had a conflict with another owner. But what we are doing here is presenting a Form A plan of four lots off of Bradford Street, which is still a private way. It was brought up to specs, what, three years ago? Paved water sewer drainage was brought down. Deterre Brothers have Form Aid on the west side of Bradford Street. They had to go back to town meeting to get it rezoned because the village line basically was at the right-of-way line on the east side of Bradford Street. That happened last year. They rezoned and put the zone mine on the upper half of this parcel now so they could use the village district requirements and the 10,000 square feet, 100 feet of frontage, 90 feet of width to create these lots. So basically what we are doing, the first lot in, 482-1, is going to have frontage on Pembroke Street, which is a public 40-foot wide road. And then we're coming in with lots 2, 3, and 4. All have the required minimum 100 feet of frontage. They all have 101, 101. This has almost 200 feet here, 180, say plus or minus. And the required area, all up in the area. So I think it's fairly straightforward and if we have any questions that we can answer.
The retention pond.
Is the drainage complete?
I don't think that a retention ration is built yet, no. I think that town is still holding up.
So the pond money? There's an escrow account for that?
Yes.
How much is in the escrow fund?
You know, Jeff?
35,000.
35,000.
Okay, so the pond that's out there, that's a natural pond?
I haven't been to the site in a while.
Mr. Chairman went to the site. He showed me photos.
You've got a big pond at the end of the road.
It's still out there a couple of weeks ago too.
Yeah, so, so pretty much what's been going on is we were going to do the cleanup. And if you notice, there's a pile of windroller dirt. So in that area, we can't touch anything else. So we're still trapped on that section of land. Now, the reason we haven't done the cleanup yet is because the whole stormwater management thing got thrown at us because we're just over the amount of square footage, I guess. I'm learning about it as we go, but, so now we're going backwards again trying to figure out where we're going to abide by the new stormwater bylaws, which seems like it's going to be a substantial cost. And we already have a substantial cost to clean this property up. So we're trying to determine or, we're trying to figure out what road we can take to make it feasible to keep moving forward with this project. Because, you know, I really don't know what the stormwater is going to cost yet. And, you know, just cleaning up the contaminated soils and stuff that already exist is a great feat in itself, you know? And that water's been running off for all these years to wherever. So, I mean, we go to Conservation, I think, next Wednesday or Thursday. And we're going to discuss this situation to see if it's feasible and affordable, you know? And I mean, that wasn't the only thing that's happened here, you know? There's been a couple of other fees that have really been setting us back up. Such as I brought up, they're hitting us with betterment fees on every single home of $13,000 plus the tying fees. I mean, I would be more than happy with paying a betterment fee for the initial tying to Pembroke, but to get whacked with $98,000 in fees is a substantial amount of money. And then to give the road and put in the water, put in the sewer. I mean, we're talking, you know, it's getting very expensive with all these fees. And, you know, we really came into this trying to do something nice and clean up the area. I mean, we just keep getting hit left and right and it's tough, you know? It's going to be hard to turn a profit, I guess. I mean, we didn't think it was going to come to this, but we thought people would think we're doing a good deed and cleaning up the town. And we're just asking for people to work with us a little bit, you know? So we can try to at least make a little bit of profit or try to anyway, you know? So I just don't know, you know? We didn't see all the, I mean, I've been told maybe the stormwater management process now could cost 80 to 100 grand. Then we have 100 grand in fees. Then we, I mean, it's hard to make money in an area like that when these houses are only, you know, selling for so much money based off what's around them, you know?
I mean, at this point, you're just, this is just a Form A plan to carve it up into, in this case, four.
So what the hole was is we have nowhere to put dirt. So we just used some dirt from the area and we moved it. Because that area, that section that we're working in is already, you know, the A and R plan was done. So that's where you see the little pond. We just were trying to utilize their site because nothing can leave the site. So we're just trying not to bring stuff in and then have way more stuff to bring out. So we're trying to utilize the material to save money and, you know, pretty much just to get a gist of.
You're going to have to comply with whatever the stormwater requirements are and if there are any wetlands requirements. But I just, all I'm really getting at is all we're talking about is four lots, A and R plan. Does it have area? Does it have frontage? And they do. I mean, before you can do any building in there, you know, get building permits for houses, he's going to comply with stormwater and conservation requirements.
And that's what we'll find out on Thursday. We're going to see where it goes and where it takes us. And we're going to do the best we can to work with everybody, you know?
Cut, you wish to speak?
Hey, dude, just so Jeff knows, there was some confusion between his office and Joanne. His office prematurely sent out the body notifications, but Joanne did not run a newspaper ad. So this, there won't be a public hearing on Wednesday night.
For Conservation?
Yeah. For Conservation, for your stormwater. What happens is your stormwater is the middle that just came in. The commission on Wednesday night will determine who the peer review engineer will be. You folks will agree to it. It'll go to peer review for an estimate. When the estimate comes back, if you agree with the estimate, you'll provide a check for that amount of money to the town and then the peer review will begin. So, but the commission won't be able to discuss anything because the ad didn't get run.
Okay.
It doesn't make any sense to put a public hearing on our agenda and have people show up until the peer review comes back and we actually have information to give to the public at the first public hearing.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's on, I guess, on Niles and stuff for me to discuss with him, you know?
Joanne mentioned the body notification and the girl sent it out. And Joanne just found out today and it was too late around the ad.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Okay.
All right.
Gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to approve the plans.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Aye.
Signing block is in the correct place.
I know. Perfect.
Hey, Mark, are we good for tonight?
Uh, yeah, after this, we got, next round, but yeah, we're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. It should be.
Hey, John, you wouldn't happen to have a duty?
Yeah, because this one's. Always bring one, just in case.
Yeah, this one's kind of thick. This one's kind of thick.
Find here some, there's some that are all consistent. Roll it down. Thank you very much. You can keep it if you want.
That's the second one we got.
Just throw out the ones that don't work. That's my only request.
You have a whole box.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night. The whole box, I just forgot to bring the pencil box.
This is the same as that. The same acre. One of these numbers.
Do you have a blank list?
Oh, got it. And then why at least course?
We're not going with any salvage whatsoever.
Oh, okay, got it.
Thank you, sir. Next is, under discussions, next is the Next Am solar arrays at Cushing Lane, Whites Farm Inc. applicant, 1050 Main Street, Cushinget Solar LLC applicant, 1052 Main Street, Woodbridge Renewables LLC applicant, and Robinson Road, Robinson Solar LLC applicant. This is to review of the decommissioning bonds.
Evening, members of the planning board. My name is Jack Curry of Next Am, representing the four project LLCs that are on the agenda tonight. We also have some folks out on Zoom, and we'll chime in if need be. So before we get going, I know we're on the agenda for a review of the decommissioning bonds. So I wanted to ask the board's intent tonight, is it just a discussion on these bonds and the amounts, the form of the agreements, or is there an intent to actually vote on the agreements themselves?
If this board looks over these numbers and they agree to the numbers, then we will vote to agree to the numbers.
Sure. So we would actually ask for tonight to be a discussion about the numbers and for a formal vote to be coming at the next planning board hearing. The reason for that is we have a few minor modifications that we've discussed through yourself, Chairman, and the planning board, as well as some other department heads, including Building Inspector and Conservation Commission Agent. So there have been some minor requests, such as fence site to the projects, as well as some requests of the fire chief. So we plan on submitting plans for a reaffirmation, I guess we could say, of Next Am's plans at the next planning board hearing. So we felt that it might pass to address decommissioning and those minor modifications in one go.
Okay. So basically, you want to continue the discussion of the decommissioning bonds until the next meeting?
Right, but while we're here, you know, we wanted to field any questions or concerns that the board might have about these numbers. I know that when we, at a previous meeting, I believe it was last Thursday amongst some of the department heads, there was a request for numbers to match among projects of the same size.
That was me. And you're more than welcome to match. Mr. DeVigene had just asked me the same thing, and at the time of last week's meeting, I wasn't aware. I was just looking at the size of the megawatts, which 1050 Main is 1.3 megawatts, and Robinson Road is 1.3 megawatts, the same size. And I was wondering why 1050 was 105,000 and Robinson Road was 92,000. Then it was brought to my attention, the number of modules at 1050 is greater than the modules at Robinson Road. That's why the decommissioning is also greater. So as far as I'm concerned, I understand why there is a difference, even though the megawatts are the same. Just so the board, the board knows, we are not doing anything with the salvage numbers. So everything that you see that has a salvage numbers, erase that. That's, we're not using those numbers. The final number after a 20-year escalator is the last number on the without salvage cost.
I have a question.
Please.
I see in the corner it says Field Engineering Estimates. Is Field working for you, or are they working for us?
Field is the one that I think, I'm pretty sure, that was working for us to come up with these numbers on against their engineering.
Correct. So we had submitted decommissioning estimates as part of the planning board permitting process, and then Field Engineering came back with, I believe, a peer reviewer of the town with higher number of estimates. So at the time, I believe those did include salvage values, and since then, town has requested that we do not include salvage values, but we are allowed to do a bond, which we agreed to.
Okay. And the town, the towns agreed to the bond?
Actually, yes, so...
I know there was an issue in the past of that.
And our council, I didn't make copies for everybody because I didn't see the need, but I have, Bonding Company has their form. This has been vetted through Town Council, through J.A.M. Kelly, and it has been agreed upon about, through all parties, that this bond in company is the one they're gonna go with.
Okay. Same bonding company for all four projects?
Yes. Now, I basically looked at some of our past decommissioning, and like you all know, I've been wanting to make some kind of a standard decommissioning dollar amount. After Paul doing extensive research, it's very difficult to come up with a standard. As you can see, some panels do certain amount of megawatt, other panels do other amount of megawatt. You can't go by megawatt. Some panels are bigger than other panels, some panels are smaller than other panels. It's very difficult to come up with a standard that we can just say, hey, it's this much, it's gonna cost this much. I just think we're in the very beginning stages of all these solar fields, and we don't know what the decommissioning cost is gonna be 20 years from now. So it's very difficult, well, 30 years from now, so it's very difficult to put an exact number on it. So we can only go by their engineering costs, our peer review engineering costs, and we go by that for the meantime until we can... Like I said, Paul did extensive research all the way into New York. Some were 15,000, which was peanuts, and others were, I mean, it's just insane differences on how different towns and different states are pricing for decommissioning. It was very difficult to find anything that was consistent.
Plus, this is all new.
Exactly.
The data's gonna be there 20 years from now.
Right.
After 10, 10 years of decommissioning happens.
Right.
Okay. So I mean, when they, decommissioning includes removing the modules, removing all the stanchions, bringing the...
To the best of my knowledge, losing, hey...
A clean site. Restore it right back to, obviously, before the trees were taken out.
Right.
Does it factor into the equation, the gravel access road built around the outer edges?
Correct.
So that'll be stripped out, alone, to the seeded?
Correct.
So we restore it to vegetation?
Correct.
And just so you know, I'm sorry, your name again?
Jack.
Jack, we did have a department head meeting with, with Next Am, and a lot of things came up, like he had mentioned a few, and they're, they're addressing it, Robinson Road, with some screening around Robinson Road.
They realized they were gonna take out as much trees as they did on that backside.
No, we, none of us did. So we've already been in discussions regarding screening on that backside. I also wasn't satisfied with the screening at the front. And the building inspector also wanted them to look at the height of the fence and the type of fence it is. Between us and everybody on TV, I'm not very happy about the fencing that's going up around the old driving range, which is gonna be a chain link fence. We didn't vote on that, so I, I wasn't around with that. And that should have been a more aesthetic-looking fence that's gonna be going by, if we're gonna be driving by it. That's one of the things that we're discussing with Robinson Road as well, because a construction chain link fence definitely isn't something that people wanna be driving by all the time. You put, you put, you know, arborvitae in front of the fences, is that a better thing for that?
I will say this, talked with Andy about, you need to take a look at the file for that project, because I went to the public hearing as a citizen, concerned about what I'm gonna be driving by. And they showed a rendition, they brought out a pretty picture, and it was three, four feet long, of all these nice big trees. So the fence would be irrelevant if they do what they're supposed to.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Based on what they said they were. You won't be able to see the fence. And we need to make sure before Andy gives them the hookup, that they, this spring, do what they're supposed to.
Forage in front of it.
Chores trees, not Charlie Brown trees like Wayne Lane.
Another issue that we had discussed was the fire chief requires a 360-foot gravel road all the way around. Theirs, I think, was 14 feet. They're gonna modify it to the minimum of 16 feet. So there are certain things that we've, that's what they're going back to the drawing board on.
If I may chime in on the access road?
Please.
Actually, before we, before we get to that, for the Robinson Road screening, as I understand it during the original planning board permitting process, that the request was for arborvitae's lining the site, that it was actually a better appealing, better looking site with clusters of trees, which is why we had moved forward with that.
Instead of, instead of a straight line?
Instead of lining with arborvitae's. So that's just, just some context as to why it looks the way it does.
Okay, all right. I wasn't there for that. You guys recall that conversation? You two probably went to...
There have been so many at this point, and, you know, the conversations and the sites tend to blend together. I'm gonna, I'm gonna need to get a, like, a little cheat sheet from my wrist that shows all the different areas of all the different solar arrays. I, I, yeah, I mean, honestly, the, the best screen that I've seen is up near the New Bedford Water Works, they built like a 10-foot-high berm around the thing. And they put arborvitae's on top of that. Half the arborvitae's are dead now, but the berm is still there. So I'm, I'm, in my own mind, I'm, I'm kind of in the do-it-with-dirt method instead of do-it-with-plants method. You know, I know on the, on the site, on the 1050 Main Street site, they stripped all the topsoil off. Well, let's, let's go make some berms with that.
They're, they're meeting conversations with conservation regarding 1050 and what they're gonna do with that entrance.
Oh, no, no, I, I know, but I'm just, I'm, you know, as these projects go on, you know, you, you, we all learn a little bit about them. And, you know, I, there's been hesitation on some of the previous ones to build these bigger berms. But again, in my view, hey, if, if they're gonna strip all the topsoil off the site, then let's make berms out of it and use that for screening. And I don't, you wouldn't have to worry about what it looks like because it'll all grow over with brush over time, and you won't see anything back there. I think it's just something relative to where they are, you know? It's gonna be looked at an individual basis. Going down Main Street, I don't think you're gonna wanna see a big dirt berm right now over there. Or pan, I mean, panels, you know? That's my opinion. Let's wait for 20 years for things to grow up and provide permanent screening, you know? I don't know. I don't have the answer to that one either. Arborvitae's can grow pretty quick, so...
Well, like I said, there's still, there's still things in the works that, you know, obviously, they're gonna talk about at the, at the next meeting. Is there anything else you'd like to discuss?
Yeah, I'll touch on the fire roads.
Please.
We did speak with the fire chief, and he provided written approval for 14-foot perimeter fire roads.
He did provide written approval for 14-foot?
Correct. Via email yesterday to our construction manager, who's on the call tonight, the 360-degree access along the interior of the perimeter are allowed to be 14 feet. I brought a copies of the email, which I, which I can...
I mean, even, even on that one, you know, if the project that's going in off of Main Street next to, next to Leonard, I mean, they ended up, they picked up that grade a good three feet because it was underwater in the, in, in the early months. So, you know, it, there's, there's a lot more than... So, you know, it, there's, there's a lot more than, I mean, they couldn't get construction vehicles up there. So, you know, there's more to just the road thing than the 14 feet also. You know, that, that particular one. So now, when they, when they did that, well, guess what? That's kind of been a natural temporary holding area over the years. Well, now that whole temporary holding area is shifted over...
To the street.
To the, well, to, more to the neighbor's property than, than anything else. So there's, there's a lot of issues, I think, relative to these access roads, and we've, we've got to be a lot more attentive to...
Didn't we have a regulation power why the road had to be to go through the solar?
I'm going to look into that.
I thought we had a...
I think it's, you had two different things. One from the road to get to the site, you know, that, that...
Right. That needs to be accessible, yeah.
But the one that goes around inside the interior.
Yeah, I guess you rely more on the fire chief, but...
The, the fire chief did confirm that main access roads getting to the array do need to be at least 16 feet. So the interior fire roads, he confirmed?
Then they have to be gravel.
Correct.
Why make them less, your 16 going in?
Yeah, it doesn't seem to make...
It's illogical to...
Because there's certain areas that their panels will interfere, and they can't go 16.
Right. And when we had permitted the projects, it was under the pretense that 14 feet would be allowable. And we did get written confirmation from the previous fire chief for the project saying that 14 feet would be sufficient. So that's, that's why the project is designed as it is with 14-feet-wide interior fire roads.
Now, the one on the 10, the 1050, that one doesn't go all the way around. What did he say about that?
So that one is, he still has a concern about that particular site. So that was going to be my last question tonight, is because the project was designed with approval from a previous fire chief without the full access road going around the site, the ask would be that if we can make that work, can we bump out the fence two, three feet in a few areas to accommodate the fire road in some pinch points of the array?
Is that the one that's underwater?
Yeah. So, correct me if I'm wrong, so you're not going to go 360, you just want to have certain areas that you can go into?
We do have that now. We have two turnaround areas.
Yes, you have one that kind of S's from one into the other. But you can't get to this side on this one, and you can't get to this side on this one. So are you going to be able to access all the way around one way or another on those sites?
Yes, we should be. So the, the two solutions here would be to either have access points to all the sites, which is, which should be doable under the current design, or to try and accommodate a wider perimeter fire road around the entire site, and then have to bump out the fence to the response.
Ultimately, we're going to be looking to the fire chief to say, you know, if he's satisfied with the access, you know, in writing, citing a specific plan with a specific revision date on it, then, you know, I'm, I'm not going to tell the fire chief he needs more or less access to the array. I've got to depend on him and his expertise on that one, but that's just my own opinion.
I think common sense says, though, if you can bump the fence out to make the road all the way around, it's just safer that way.
Yeah.
To give him full access. I mean, there aren't homes nearby. It just, doesn't seem to make any sense to do all these shortcut roads and, you know, could be able to reach over there, just give him the road all the way around. It just makes sense. I mean, what does it matter if the fence goes up five feet all the way around? I don't know if it matters.
You know, without seeing, I have to have a plan in front of me.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at.
You know, I mean, that's very difficult for me to, you know, direct, to create an answer if I don't have the plan and the proposal in front of me.
Maybe you could show us something at the next meeting, the two alternates and...
Yeah. So our, our plan, our hope here would be that we can work something out with the fire chief before the filing date for next, next hearing, which, as I understand, would be next Friday, 14th at the very latest.
Correct.
So that would be our intent, to get it worked out with the fire chief beforehand so that we can present plans to the planning board that would be acceptable for not just that one site either. Because there are minor modifications, such as the fence site, and we talked about the screening on Robinson Road.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of our intent here, and how we'd like to proceed. Of course, we need to get fire chief on board first.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just don't want him to feel...
I, I mean, and as a general question, I mean, if you want to bump the feet out five, bump the fence out five seat, five feet, and there's hundreds of feet of wetlands and forests behind it, well, then it doesn't make a whole lot of difference. But if it's five feet next to that, that guy near the access to Park Drive, well, then, now that's a big deal. So I, you know, I don't have an answer because I need a proposal in front of me first. I mean, I, I think this board normally will look at things in a common sense fashion and make, make a decision accordingly. But, I mean, those, those are two extremes, and there's two different answers to a five-foot bump out in a fence.
So you just, I got one question on decommissioning. Okay, we're going out, we're going out 20 years. Is that the expected life that's when you plan a decommissioning them is in 20 years? Or is it, you're going to, if they cut life to them, you're going to go out 30 years?
Right. So the, I mean, the panels themselves are manufactured and warranted for longer than 20 years. The standard decommissioning bond goes out to 20. So...
So if it will pass, then they're going to have to up the bond 2% per year.
Okay, that's, that's what I meant.
And that's where the town planner would keep an eye on the bonds and the solar fields, and they have to re-up the bonds every so often and come back to us with it.
So the, the numbers that were in the decommissioning bond agreements that Paul Sullivan had shared, those were the year 20 numbers, so they've already factored in escalation.
Right.
So rather than...
But what he's saying is, if, I mean, we got 20 years here for 100 grand, and you go another 10 years, and you're going to decommission, that number's going to change 10 years later.
You're going to go up 2% a year.
So instead of Next Amp issuing a bond for, say, Cushing Lane at 90,000 for year one, and then having to re-issue bond year over year with an escalation, it seems like the town, and we're fine with it as well, just issuing a bond for year 20 now.
All right. I would kind of look at it as, okay, your 20 years are up, decommissioned it. If the answer is no, well, then we need another bond, or we need to pull the bond that you got to decommission it at 20 years. So I mean, there's, there's leverage there to use.
Right.
It's, but, you know, it, it requires, when it gets to the year 19, I probably won't even be around then, but it'll have to be looked at a little bit more closely the year before that, that 20 years, so.
You're not going to be sitting in that seat in 20 years?
Uh, let's see, that would make me 90 years old. If I'm in this seat, I will be asleep at this time of day.
All right. Anything else?
Just before we part, as, you know, are we in general agreeing about the numbers that we presented tonight, as well as the, the bond form, which seems to have been approved by town's council?
We won't vote on the numbers, or we can take an informal, is everybody okay with the numbers that they have presented?
I mean, Field, Field, I feel generated them. I'm not going to do another cost estimate to, you know, to, to second guess it. I mean, with the bond, with the, the 2.5% escalator every year, my, my, my actual hope is that, like, if you had roof panels on your house, after 20 years, you're not going to be looking at ripping the roof panels off. I would hope the technology is advanced enough that you would look at replacing the existing panels and taking advantage of the sun, you know, for, for a longer period of time. I mean, that's kind of my hope with some of these solar arrays, is that, you know, you're really, that, that it's going to be somehow feasible to tap the energy from the sun to pump into the electric grid. You know, I, maybe that's a false hope, but I would, I would hope it ends in that direction. And there should be many minds across the United States trying to figure out what to do with these aging solar arrays. And if you're looking at just toss it or try to come up with a solution to make more money out of it, usually the, the make more money theme ends up prevailing.
Yeah, you can't argue with numbers that you really don't know how they're being arrived at.
In, in general, I could say, well, you know, as a conservative estimate, 100, you know, 20 years out, 100,000 a megawatt. I mean, that's, that's about where these numbers are. It's probably a little lower for the two-megawatt one. But, you know, in general, it should be in the 80 to $100,000 a megawatt range based on these, these projects that we've got right now. I mean, if somebody comes in at, at 40,000 20 years out for a megawatt, well, then I would probably not be willing to approve it.
Again, it's, it's a, it's a crystal ball, because if you, if you look, if you look at the, the escalation of inflation right about now, these numbers, we don't even go, we don't know.
Yeah. Don't get me going on that one.
Anything else?
Is the board comfortable with us continuing discussions with Conservation Commission, Buildings Inspector alongside discussions here?
Yeah, I'd like to have it kind of go, like Dave said, with the previous one simultaneously, so it's kind of going together. Can I get a motion to extend this to, we want it at the next meeting?
Yes, please.
I don't think you need a motion. You just put it on the agenda, but...
You don't need a motion to continue it to the next?
It's not a public hearing. It was just a discussion topic item.
Then you're going to the next?
Just, just get the information in before the meeting.
Yeah.
So the day that we just did the plan, the, yesterday, that's probably not going to get any traction with this group.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Current planning is nothing, long-range planning is nothing. Quick discussion, you also see in your packets, we had asked, what was her name, Jennifer?
Thompson, I think.
Thompson, Jennifer Thompson. We had asked her to give us a list of, of possible grants that Cushinget would be eligible for, for the new town planner to look into. We just didn't know exactly if there were any, how many there were, what their dollar values were. I just got this today, so I haven't...
Yeah, same here.
I haven't looked at it, but it's just giving you some, I mean, something to read at the process. I mean, there are grants here for 250,000, there's a grant here for 18.7 million, anywhere between 50 to 50,000 to a million, 50,000, there's a lot of different, 500,000, there's a lot of different grants here that we would be eligible for. There's one here for 5 million to 30 million. So this was just something that we had requested when Ms. Thompson was...
And how much of it's actually, you know, again, we get a lot, left to read, and it's a fair pitch.
Oh, absolutely.
There's a lot of work to do before...
Oh, and this is, you know, what's with the new town planner's job would be, but I asked her to narrow it down to potential grant opportunities for the town of Cushinget, and these are potential grant opportunities for the town of Cushinget. So it's just a little bit of food for you to...
When is town meeting?
May 22nd?
Okay.
I mean, I, I would love, I will look through these thoroughly. I'd love to talk to the highway superintendent and see if there's, if he sees some usefulness to pursuing some of these grants to work on streets in town. You know, I don't know if there's any water system grants here that she's got in, in here, but the same thing, I would like to really get an idea from them. Are you, would you be interested in pursuing this? Would this be good for the town?
The DPW.
What's that?
The DPW.
The DPW, yeah, and the, and the, the water department.
Sure. I mean, anything that the town planner would pursue, I'm sure would be in conversation and in conjunction with the DPW.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love, I guess where I'm headed is, you know, we're going to at one point be looking for money from town meeting. And I would love to be able to say, we've identified a couple of grants. There are many others, but that look like they will have application to projects that are necessary to do in the town of Cushinget to improve the roads and the water system and stuff like that. I have more, I have more trouble justifying pursuing grants for more planning that really doesn't help anybody's street or water system.
No, no, obviously.
That's all. I'm just, that's just conversation.
Again, it's, you know, it's a great, water sewer, everything like that, that's, that's extremely important right, right about now. Now, previous, you know...
Water sewer and roads, I mean, they're all, they're all important, and...
Water sewer condition.
And they're, they're, it's tough to find those dollars at town meeting to do those kinds of improvements.
Right.
So I mean, the DPW's got a budget, and they, they do very well with it.
Yeah, the more grants, the better.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. The more money we can get from state or federal, absolutely.
Yeah. And then some of these, even if it means that it's going to take a couple of years to go through the, the planning part to get to apply for some of these grants, if they're worthwhile, then that's, those are the things we would need to get a quote, full-time town planner working on.
Just looking at that packet, if we can get any of those, to me, would be a home run.
Yeah.
Is there anything else anybody else would like to discuss?
No, I'll say.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait a second, Dan.
For favor?
All right.